Good evening. We will call to order the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, August 26, 2025, which just happens to be our Vice Mayor's birthday. So happy birthday, Mr. Raythel. Madam Clerk, if you would please call the roll.
Birthday boy Raythel.
I'm here.
Please don't do that all night.
Rorba.
Yeah, here.
Kozowski.
Also here.
Leary.
Here.
And Aquino.
Here. If you'd all please rise and join me on the slide of allegiance.
I part with the name of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. City Attorney, do we have any agenda updates?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Item number six on tonight's agenda has been continued off calendar at the request of the event organizer, otherwise no update.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we have business from the floor. This is the public's opportunity to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. If you want to speak to this item or any item tonight, please fill out a blue card, which is on the table in the back, hand it to the officer over here, and we will call you up at the appropriate time. As of right now, do we have any requests for business from the floor?
You have no request to speak under business from the floor.
Okay, seeing none, we will move on to scheduled presentations.
Okay, your first scheduled presentation item this evening is item number one. This will be a mid-cycle housing element and housing fund update.
Good evening, Stephanie.
Good evening. Okay, let me try over here. Yeah, I'm just trying to open it.
Yeah. Sorry. Want me to go over your shoulder like this?
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, there you go.
I'm always technically challenged. Thanks. All right. So, good evening, Mayor Aquino and council members. Stephanie Henry with the Community Development Department. I appreciate the opportunity this evening to share an update on the housing element implementation and discuss funding priorities as we prepare for the second half of the Folsom's eighth-year housing element planning cycle. This presentation reviews our progress towards meeting our regional housing needs allocation, our RENA targets, provides updates on housing programs and policies, and outlines key implementation efforts. I'll also review housing funds currently available and share how they've been distributed to support previous affordable housing initiatives. The Folsom Six-Cycle Housing Element adopted in August of 2021 sets the policy framework for housing through 2029. It identifies goals, addresses new and ongoing housing challenges, and outlines programs to promote development, affordability, and equity. The cycle brought added challenges, including a large arena allocation and new compliance requirements such as SB 166, which mandates maintaining adequate land inventory throughout the entire planning cycle to meet housing targets. While Folsom's housing element reflects the city's unique priorities and challenges, it's part of a much larger framework that governs housing policy across California. Under this framework, all cities and counties are required to plan for their fair share of housing through the RENA, or Regional Housing Needs Allocation. The housing element must detail how local governments plan to meet the housing needs of residents across all income levels. Updates are mandated every eight years and must be reviewed and approved by the state. In addition, several key housing laws, such as Density Bonus, Housing Accountability Act, and No Net Loss, play a major role in how cities now accommodate growth and ensure housing To understand how these guiding principles are translating into measurable outcomes, we can take a look at Folsom's current housing performance. This table outlines Folsom's progress towards meeting its RENA through 2024. We've seen strong results in both the moderate and above moderate income segments. However, as you can see on this slide, we still have some movement in the lower RENA allocations, but there's still a significant shortfall as far as trying to meet that target. While progress is underway with two new affordable housing developments set to deliver an additional 187 units for lower-income households, it remains clear that the very high lower-income RENA targets pose a significant challenge.
Stephanie, just a little clarification, that RENA allocation is for 2021 to 2029. That's our entire allocation, right?
Exactly, yes. This slide's just showing our progress through 2024.
Thank you.
Which was our last update to the state as far as providing a progress report. To put Folsom's progress in broader context, this next slide presents HCD data from annual progress reports comparing building permit activity across SaCog jurisdictions. This helps illustrate how our efforts stack up regionally and where we're seeing strong performance. As shown, Sacramento and Roseville lead in permit volume across all income levels. Sacramento saw 67% of its housing growth meet the needs of lower and moderate income households, while Roseville achieved 49%, Folsom achieved 28%, and Elk Grove was 25%. In addition to the ongoing efforts to meet RENA obligations, we've made meaningful progress in implementing the goals, policies, and programs outlined in our adopted housing element. Of the 34 total programs, 16 are ongoing by design and 18 have defined timelines for completion. At this midpoint in the cycle, five programs have fully been completed, eight are actively underway or partially completed, and those are mostly tied to zoning code update, and five have not yet been initiated. This next slide highlights some of the programs that have been completed. Program H2 stands out as a major achievement, expanding residential capacity of over 6,000 units through targeted general plan amendments that were adopted last year. This effort created a strong buffer of available sites to avoid no net loss concerns and minimize the need for rezonings. In addition, the Folsom Plan landowners agreed to deed-restrict several of the multifamily sites in the Folsom Plan area to accommodate 900 affordable housing units in the future. Other notable programs include Program H4, which supports ADU development design through a workbook for both the historic district and citywide. And through Program H16, the city facilitated the construction of 10-for-sale affordable housing units by selling surplus land to Habitat for Humanity for the Percifer Street project. This next slide identifies several programs that are slated for completion this year, which include Program H8, H9, and H11. These programs aim to strengthen Folsom's housing strategy through design standards, fee evaluation, and funding guidelines. For the 25-26 fiscal year, staff intends to prioritize the completion of ongoing projects and the implementation of measures that are associated with the zoning code update. This slide here highlights several key actions that are still under consideration for next year. These include exploring incentives for ADUs to increase ADU supply, reviewing development and permit fees to see if there's any way to reduce those for affordable projects, advancing affordable housing near the city-owned Glen Light Rail Station, studying land acquisition opportunities, and prioritizing infrastructure to support future affordable development. So next, I'm going to shift from reviewing the status of the programs of the housing element and provide an overview of funding sources, local, state, and federal, that support implementation of the housing element. The city has established several locally managed funding sources to advance affordable housing in alignment with our housing element goals. These funds, ranging from inclusionary housing fees to reclaimed redevelopment bond proceeds, have enabled the city to support affordable housing projects for low, very low, and extremely low households. This slide before you summarizes the purposes and uses for each of these funds. As a fiscal year ended June 2025, the city's total housing fund for projects was approximately $23 million. During this past year, the city collected over $3.8 million in inclusionary housing fees as a result of single-family development, and approximately $171,000 in housing trust fund fees associated with commercial development. In addition to providing funding for affordable housing loans for affordable housing projects, these funds are used for other housing-related activities, such as updating the housing element or hiring a consultant to help us with reviewing affordable housing loans from affordable housing developers. This slide provides you with an overview of how we've used these various funds throughout the last 15 years. In addition to local funding sources, the city also receives federal funding through our partnership with Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. The city receives community development block grants and also home investment partnership program funds. Currently, $200,000 annually is used for our seniors helping seniors home repair program, and we have an allocation of about $800,000 in home funds for a future affordable housing In addition to federal resources, the city continues to leverage state-administered funding opportunities to advance our housing initiatives. The California Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, offers competitive grants like Home Key and Infill Infrastructure Grant. These grants typically require prevailing wage compliance and pose cost challenges for jurisdictions that are smaller in size like Folsom. Despite this, Folsom secured $2.5 million in Home Key funds in 2020 for a 25-unit Bidwell Street Studio project. The city also receives a share of Sacramento County Permanent Local Housing Allocation, PLHA. We receive approximately $161,000 annually for a five-year period. In 2025, current and anticipated future allocations totaling up to $810,000 were committed to Habitat for Humanity to support the Percifer Street Affordable Housing Project. So beyond state-administered programs, there are also regional funding sources. The Sacramento Area Council of Governments, SaCog, provides targeted grants that encourage sustainable development and housing production through initiatives such as regional early action planning, or REAP, and Green Means Go. As shown on this slide, the city has received several of these grants to help support our housing efforts. As the city enters the second half of the housing element planning cycle, continued focus on strategic implementation, targeted funding, and policy alignment will be essential to achieving long-term housing objectives. Council's input, this mid-cycle review will help guide priorities, ensure resources are effectively leveraged, and reinforce the city's commitment to meeting its housing obligations in a manner that reflects community values and needs. So later this year, we plan to return with additional housing implementation items, including an analysis and update of the housing inclusionary ordinance as required under our current housing element. And also, we plan to hold a workshop on objective development standards for multifamily and mixed-use developments. This concludes my presentations. Do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Stephanie. Any questions?
I got a few.
Okay.
Are we ready to opt into future direction, too? Or just questions at this point?
I think just questions at this point.
Just questions. I guess, first question, you listed all the projects that we have funded, and you mentioned, I think it was $3.8 million that came back in this year. Are we in repayment on a number of these projects that we've put out loans for?
So that $3.8 million was inclusionary housing fees that we've collected this past fiscal year from development of single-family homes.
So separate from people putting money back into the affordable housing projects that we've loaned money to at low or no interest, those, obviously, if they have funds, they pay us back.
Yeah.
That's my understanding, correct?
Yeah.
So are a number of those in repayment now? Are we collecting money back from those projects?
I would say that most of them are probably not in repayment yet, because we usually defer the payment for 10 to 15 years, but Stacy might have additional information.
We have just a couple that have paid some. It depends, there's a calculation that they do based on residual income of the project, and then we will receive some funding there, but most of them are very long-term loans, and so the majority of them are not paying significant amounts now.
So where would be the time horizon where we would expect to have that money? Like, I guess I'm just kind of thinking of like, is this a 20-year commitment from us, or is this an indefinite commitment that we're never going to be able to loan to another project? Like, what's the time horizon?
I would say we'll start receiving back in about 20 years from the majority of them, when they have that consistent residual income up to the amount that is required in the agreement.
Thank you. And I don't think I have any other questions. I'll save my other comments for prioritization.
Questions? Questions?
I'll just piggyback on Justin's question. Is that 10- to 20-year payback something that's negotiable?
It is, but the way these loans are typically structured, we provide the gap financing. So they secure their funding through housing tax credits generally, and some private investors possibly, and then there's a portion that isn't covered through that, and then that's where they come to the city and ask for that gap financing. Generally, we've seen the gap financing loan be like $2.5 million up to $8 million, $6 million. And the way that they're structured, they generally all are structured so that it's at least a 10-year period before they start paying back, and it's a small amount, it's a residual. So if they have a surplus, a cash surplus, after they've paid all their other expenses, then we get a portion of that, usually 50% of that residual cash flow, and that generally starts about year 10 to 15.
So, I'm not sure I got an answer, but I got more information, which is great. So is that, like, you said, it usually starts at 10, 10? So usually is the question. Is it something that the city is negotiating with the lundy, or whatever, the person that needs the loan, right?
Yeah.
Is it something that the... I guess my question is in line with, you know, if we negotiate an earlier payback over a long period of time, starting earlier, then we'll have more funds to give out sooner than later. So that's my question, is that negotiable?
It is negotiable, but I would have to defer to a developer who I don't have on hand, probably, because it's a very complex financing.
Okay.
Situation.
Yeah.
And so I think across the board, when they come to cities or counties, you're seeing this type of structure. And then also, we negotiate some of the terms, like recently, we've been trying to require a 35-year loan payback. At some point in time, we allowed them for like 50 years.
Okay.
So we are trying to negotiate some of those terms. Later on this evening, I'll be speaking of affordable housing loan guidelines, so we've been trying to tighten some of those things up, such as not allowing everything to be above that line when they start calling it surplus, because sometimes they try to throw in extra payments to, like, partners or others that we're trying not to allow. We're trying to get, you know, we're trying to dial that in so that we're getting a better deal for the city.
Thank you. Councilmember Leary, any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple. And I did read, you know, the upcoming item addressing the structuring of this, and it looks like you are attempting to address that, and I just had one more question about these paybacks, and are those, it's not necessarily they're all coming in in one lump sum, are they being made incrementally, you know, somewhere between those timeframes, or is it usually in one lump sum? Stacy might know the better answer to that.
They have like a debt service schedule for repayment, and then again, it'll be based on what's available, but it'd be over the 30-year period, or 25 years, or 50 years, whatever had been negotiated originally. So we'll just be receiving those payments annually.
Okay. And then I have another couple of questions, and you mentioned, you know, increasing the number of ADUs. How many of the ADUs that we have are considered to be affordable? Because generally, those are, you know, additional housing units, but they're not necessarily far into the affordable category.
Yeah, so that's the challenging, it's challenging to answer that question, because we don't have the data on what the rents are oftentimes, so we kind of project what we believe would be the affordable units. SaCog did a survey several years back, and with that survey, they had made some, it was county or regional survey, so it was, they had a bigger pot to use for their survey, and they assigned percentages for like what were moderate, were low, and what were very low income. We kind of used that survey as a template, and if you look at the data, it's generally the smaller ADUs are the ones that are going to be considered very low, so if it's like 350 square feet or 500 square feet, it might accommodate a very low household. For, you know, as they get larger, the rents go up, so we utilize that. So every year when we do our housing element annual progress report, we actually look at the square footages of all of the units and kind of make an estimate based on that, and so far, HCD has allowed that.
But these aren't units that are participating in any of the affordable.
Right.
Housing programs. Those are generally all larger apartment complexes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they're not deed-restricted.
Yeah.
And Councilmember Leary, I would just add that for, as Stephanie's describing at the outset of this eight-year housing cycle, SaCog said that methodology of counting the accessory dwelling units would be acceptable, but as a local agency, you could do more specific surveying to prove a higher rate of affordability. That hasn't really been our experience, and so we're going with the method that is determined to be acceptable.
Okay, thank you. And I just have one other question, and this, how is the, you know, we have, I believe, just the one Home Key program, and is there any kind of outreach or way to bring in some additional proposals for another Home Key-type project?
Yeah, I haven't looked at the Home Key program recently. I think there is a Home Key 3.0, so we were in the first round. I know there was at least three rounds. I'm not sure if they're still accepting applications or what stage they're at, but it seems like the state is going to try to continue to roll that program out. You know, it does have a lot of challenges. The biggest challenge that we've found by utilizing that program with the Bidwell Street Studios project was that it requires a housing-first priority, meaning that individuals who are homeless or get into these units before they have any type of wraparound services, or, so, we see, we've seen quite a bit of turnover, because individuals don't, without those services kind of ahead of getting into housing, it seems like it's difficult just to get into housing and then accept services. So that's one of the major challenges.
Well, the reason I'm asking is there are some programs out there that are providing housing and wraparound services, and that would, it sounds like that would be, they couldn't really utilize this Home Key program, that there would be a different mechanism for putting something like that in place.
They possibly could, as long as it's a housing-first priority, meaning they don't have to have any, they don't even have to accept services to be in the housing.
So we continue to look at all the grant opportunities. Stephanie does a great job tracking all of that, but it also requires a local partner that has the right kind of project for our community, so when those things align, we bring those forward to city council for consideration, so we'll continue that same process of looking at those funding opportunities and any, you know, partnership opportunities that we're aware of or that come to our attention.
Great, thank you. Stephanie, could you go back to... Slide five, please, where it shows the RENA numbers. So obviously, we've had a lot more units built above moderate than we were allocated, and presumably, we've had, we had areas that we had kind of earmarked that we thought maybe would be very low or low that have now been built at market rate. So if we didn't have that buffer already, we would have to go zone, rezone land, correct, in order to have land to then accommodate those numbers at the low, very low?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
But through that program, H2, we set ourselves up, you know, by adding additional capacity in areas that were already zoned multifamily housing, or that were next to light rail stations. You know, I think we rezoned two properties in, two sites in the planned area that were formerly like commercial or industrial to accommodate this additional housing. But right now, and hopefully for the future, housing element, we have, we have a buffer. We've also had two projects, Vintage at Folsom, the senior project across from the prison, and Harrington Grove, oh, and Habitat for Humanity. Those three projects that were recently approved were not one of the sites identified in our housing element, so we added units through those three projects.
Got it, okay. And then, so, something like, you know, Powerhouse Ministries is working on a live-in long-term program for men like they do for women, right? Let's just say 40 beds. Can that be counted anywhere on here, like, very low, low? I mean, that is their housing. Granted, there is, you know, it's probably two years for most of them, but can it, does that count toward any of these?
I would say that we would be able to utilize probably our inclusionary housing fund for programs such as that. Our restriction currently for the inclusionary housing fund is that 50% has to be dedicated for building affordable, long-term housing.
Okay, so we could possibly use some of our funding to help them, but let's say it's a 40-bed facility that they're building. Can we say that that's 40 units toward our RENA number?
No.
No, okay.
Not if it's like, not a, it's more transitional housing, that doesn't count. Not if it's like, not a, it's more transitional housing. That doesn't count.
Got it. Okay. All right. In terms of, uh, direction to staff for the future, Vice Mayor Raythel, start with you.
You brought up the 50% has to be used for long-term housing. Um, is that part of an ordinance? Is that directed by HCD? Is that part of our lawsuit settlement?
Yeah. So that, there's two parts.
Okay.
The inclusionary housing fees are for our, are related to our inclusionary housing ordinance. And the inclusionary housing ordinance is to develop, is designed to develop low and very low income housing, permanent housing.
But I, I believe that the indication was made that this had to be rental housing, but that's not anywhere in our inclusionary housing ordinance. So do we, the 50% doesn't have to be to rental housing. The 50% has to be just?
No. It doesn't.
Does it, doesn't, 100% of the Housing Trust Fund doesn't have to be used for?
This, we have two funds. We have the Folsom Housing Fund. I know it's confusing.
Can we go to that slide real quick?
Fund 238.
Just so I'm real clear on what?
Say where. So the top fund, that's the Housing Trust Fund. That fund, um, we do have some flexibility with that. We can use it for administration. We can use it for any, per our ordinance, we can use it to further our housing element goals. Um, for the housing fund 238, the one below that, that's from our inclusionary housing fees. We do have a stipulation agreement from our previous, um, lawsuit, that said if we were going to add an inclusionary housing fee option, that we would restrict 50% of those fees to go directly to affordable housing projects for low and very low income households.
So you're telling me that 11.4 million of that I can use on other things?
I would defer to Stacy on that one, but as far as I-
That's not in our ordinance anywhere. So this is the first I'm hearing.
I believe that's the way these fees are structured. If she has any additional information.
My interpretation is it's, it would still need to be used on affordable housing, just maybe not in the definition of low and very low.
Got it. So we could use it on transportation supporting affordable housing, or we could use it. We can come back to this, too. I, I just, I'm trying to get a little clarity on it.
I think what it means is we could use it like on administration of our affordable housing programs, more than transportation.
I, I think it's a question that, uh, we, we should explore more fully.
Okay. Sounds good. I, I, two other questions. And this first one, and sorry if I sound like a broken record a little bit. Where are we at with the Habitat for Humanity reimbursement to the general fund from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund?
Uh, I will be bringing that back for council consideration in the next four to six weeks.
Thank you. And then, um, we've talked in the past about ADU pre-approved plans. Uh, I know there was, I don't remember what the bill was, we were basically requiring all jurisdictions to have these. I don't believe we have any yet. I don't believe we can use Sacramento counties. Um, have we looked into pre-approved ADU plans? If not, I can include that as part of my strategy, but I just kind of wanted to see where you guys were at, because I, I think we are already required, technically required to have them.
Desmond might want to speak to this. I think he'll provide a, a better answer than I will.
So I, um, my understanding of the law is that if, if an architect approaches us wanting to get their, their, um, ADUs pre-approved, um, we can do that. We haven't been approached by anybody a, at that point. And then the, you know, the, the city hasn't authorized the, the funding to, to do such a program, because we would need, you know, the, the money to hire an architect to prepare a set of pre-approved plans. And then we'd have to administer those plans. So a number of cities have done that. Um, like you mentioned, Sacramento City, Sacramento County, they have done that. That is something that the city could do. Um, we would just have to have the funding set aside. And then we would have to update those as the building code or Title 24 changes. That's been one of the challenges with some of these pre-approved plans, is that if the city owns them, then the city has, has to be responsible for updating them. Um, but we, uh, uh, we are open to, if there's any architects out there that would like to get their plans pre-approved, um, then, you know, we can certainly, uh, do, do that. And then the, you know, the, um, the, the architect then has a responsibility of keeping those plans updated.
Thank you for that clarification. All right. So jumping over to, to strategy, for me, from an Affordable Housing Trust Fund standpoint, Affordable Housing Program, um, I think, uh, the ADU accelerator program, uh, or ADU incentive program, whatever you want to call it, I think is, um, is definitely a priority for me. Um, I did have a, a PAPA intern, uh, this summer. Uh, and I want to kind of go on the record. Uh, I was going to thank her in my council comments today anyway, so this is perfect for the presentation. Um, Adiya Krishna Murthy, uh, is, is in her graduate studies at UC Davis, and she helped out looking at ADU accelerator programs, and also home rehabilitation programs, uh, and what other municipalities in California are doing. So I sent that over to staff for you guys' analysis, um, and to look at kind of what, um, other jurisdictions are doing. Uh, so hopefully that's a good start, um, on those. It was, uh, very nice of her to kind of put that research together for us, uh, over the summer. Uh, I do think those are also in line with my priorities. The ADU accelerator, I think, is a great, uh, cost-effective way, um, for affordable housing. And it also is likely dispersed, uh, throughout the city, which I think is a positive. Uh, and then the home rehabilitation programs, uh, for me, if we can prevent somebody from losing their home, uh, that is a, a wise investment, uh, for us as a city. Uh, and I'm open to whether we ask for a deed restriction. Uh, a number of those municipalities, uh, that are offering this have, uh, an option to deed restrict a rehabilitation, uh, house. So I think that meets my goal of dispersing it throughout the city. And also, uh, Sacramento County's working on the data to try to, uh, better target and prevent homelessness. Uh, so I think we could use that data as they kind of get these, this stood up to where we can identify folks that may be at risk. Uh, if we can hop in and use some of our affordable housing funds, um, to prevent somebody from losing their home, I think that would be, be very wise. And then I think if we can get, uh, maybe some contractors, uh, that are interested in this, uh, type of program, to where we use some of our older housing stock and convert kind of naturally more attainable housing over to affordable housing instead of building it brand new, uh, I think it has, uh, significant advantages from the cost-saving standpoint, uh, and making our dollars go further. Uh, for me, it's also prioritizing residents and prioritizing local workers. Uh, this is something that we may talk about later in the Affordable Housing, uh, Loan Guidelines. Uh, but to me, we really need a preference, uh, for those folks that live here, uh, or they work here. The goal is to cut down on vehicle miles traveled, uh, or one of the goals is to cut down on vehicle miles traveled. And so moving somebody here, uh, for a affordable housing program, but having them work in Sacramento or Oak Grove or Citrus Heights, or wherever else, doesn't further, doesn't help with our traffic, uh, challenges and some of the impacts of development. So I'd really like to see prioritizing residents and workers, um, in whatever we do. Uh, my preference is homeownership. I know there's a mixed bag on this. Uh, there's downsides to rentals, there's downsides to homeownerships. My preference, uh, really lies in prioritizing homeownerships, down payment assistance programs, 0% loans or low-interest loans directly to, uh, homeowners. To make homes affordable, uh, would be my preference over, uh, subsidizing large rental apartment complexes. Not that we don't have a need for some of those, uh, but I think we need to spread it around and not just do one type of affordable housing. Uh, and then my last request, uh, would be, uh, to not forget about naturally affordable housing, or people are calling it now attainable housing, call it missing middle housing. Um, if we come across things that we can make housing more attainable, um, by lowering our regulations, um, or finding a quicker way to process things, or finding a way, um, to lower impact fees for, for those sort of projects. Um, to me, I just ask you not to forget about those things. So just because some things may be in the 80 to 120% range, or in that moderate range, um, there are things that we can do. Sounds like we might have 11.4 million that we could, that we have, uh, to possibly go to that missing middle. Uh, and that, to me, is if we look at a, a project that is in that range, and we subsidize it a little bit, uh, and put it in a family's hands that they can live in long-term, um, then I think we've, we've hopefully solved their affordable housing crisis for that family, uh, for a lifetime, instead of just for a few years. So that's, those are my, my, uh, wishes for an affordable housing program.
Councilmember Kozlowski, anything you want to add?
I'm not sure I can add a lot to that. I will suggest that if we're gonna, if we want to try and encourage people to do ADUs in a more dispersed way throughout the city, that would be good, because right now they're almost all in the historic district. Um, and I think, um, one of the barriers to entry, so to speak, with accessory dwelling units in the rest of the city is people's perception of the cost, um, the complexity of getting an ADU onto a home site that already exists in a place like, say, Lexington Hills, um, what their obligations are to their deed restrictions. Um, so it might be interesting, actually, as an exercise, to gather some, uh, volunteers from the community and do a charrette, and just kind of take a couple neighborhoods and, um, come up with not full plans for an ADU, but, um, all the sort of information that you need to consider starting an ADU project. So, you know, what, what, what does your homeowners association say? What are the, you know, what rules apply or don't apply in light of state law changes? Um, you know, what are the space considerations for the size of an ADU? How would you put it in if you're trying to convert a garage? How would you put it in if you're trying to go over top of a garage? What, you know, what, what accessibility rules do you have to try and meet? Screening, landscaping, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Um, it would be interesting to just do a little, you know, find community members to do this. But there's lots of smart architects and engineers and people out there. Um, and I think that would be a, uh, an afternoon well-spent on a Saturday, trying to take apart how you do an ADU in Lexington Hills, or how you do it in Broadstone area. And that would give people maybe the idea that they could do it. And then, uh, probably a property management company so that they can, you know, collect the rent and just, you know, not have to, uh, clean it and take care of it so much. So, anyway, that's, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rorba, any direction on stuff?
I just had to Google a new word, charrette. Hadn't heard that one before, so I do appreciate that. Um, I, I do, um, I don't know if this is, I, I guess my question is, is this something that we can use to incentivize building condos? Um, have apartment builders build, maybe add some condos in there that are, you know, getting those people that can't afford homeownership, um, a single-family home, but may be able to do a condo? So that maybe, like Justin said, that 80 to 100% incentive. Um, so I'd like, I would like to see more condos available throughout the city. Um, so I would like to see a study on, you know, what, have other cities done this? Can we use some of these funds to incentivize the developers to do it? Or is it supplementing in some way? I mean, I'll leave all the, you know, the answers to all those questions and all the questions that need to be asked to you guys. But that is something that, um, is a high priority for me to find, get throughout. We had a brief discussion about it when we talked about zoning in south of 50 recently. And I think there was pretty good consensus that we all would like to see more condos versus apartments. Um, so that, that's, that would be a priority for me.
Okay.
Thank you. And, oh, then, I'm sorry. And then also, just making sure those time delays, streamlining, permitting process, that's still a focus for the Community Development Department. But I, but I know that there is, and there's been effort going, so.
Councilmember Leary?
So I appreciate all the thought that, um, Councilmember Raythel has put into those various ideas. I, one of my biggest concerns, I think, is keeping these affordable. And so the, you know, the idea of having people rehab a house that, uh, you know, that they, that they can stay in, uh, it seems to me to keep that in the affordable range, you would have to deed restrict it. And there's, uh, I mean, there's clearly, doesn't seem to be a good way to restrict the rents, uh, on the ADUs when people are, are putting those in. So I guess my biggest concern is that we haven't been able to really put a dent in the low and very low, or as big of a dent in the low and very low, uh, income sector.
If the city acted, if the city acted as a lender, we could insist on deed restrictions.
Yeah, and that's what, that was my question.
That's what we do, yeah.
So, so could we, on an ADU, put a deed restriction?
If we were a lender.
Well, correct. So I just want to make sure there are mechanisms in place when we look into these things, to keep these things affordable. And in those lower ranges, we're, we're struggling to, you know, get anywhere close to meeting the required numbers. Uh, you know, we're doing fine in the, in the middle income and the, and the other categories. So, um, I'm interested in pursuing all those ideas as well. Thank you.
Yeah. I just wanted to bring up one point with the deed restrictions. We do have about 75 deed-restricted affordable condo units in the city already. These took, were deed-restricted about, uh, 15 to 20 years ago. Um, the issue with the deed restriction for these for-sale units is that, uh, the individuals don't develop equity. So if they put any money into the home, I mean, because they buy it at a deed-restricted price. And then when they go to sell it, there's a formula that they sell it at a deed-restricted price. So for instance, some of those condos are going for like $250,000, and their neighbor can sell the same condo for $400,000. And then they put in granite countertops and, you know, new carpeting, and then they can't recoup that back. So that's one of the reasons that some of the cities have been going away from these types of projects and looking at, like the Habitat type of, um, format, where they, the structure where they actually sell those homes like at a market rate, but do that silent second. Because those individuals actually do get a lot of equity in those homes if they do decide to sell them down the road. Um, so that's just one of the considerations when you're looking at trying to deed-restrict single-family housing or condos. Um, and they're also, the city has to be, um, monitoring those. So you have to set out monitors, and that's, it's hard to monitor individuals with their homes, whether or not they're just renting it out, and they say they're still living there, et cetera. So there are some challenges to that, even though, I mean, ideally, we have 75 households that are living in affordable for-sale units.
Thank you. Go ahead.
They do share equity, though. Like, to say that somebody's not getting equity when they live in the house, is one of these condos, is they're selling it at what is now an affordable rate, which is much, much higher than when they bought it at an affordable rate 15 years ago, right?
Possibly. We've had actually individuals that haven't made that much equity.
I don't-
And I think the thing is, that it doesn't go with the market. It goes with, um, goes with income increases. So right now, since incomes have increased so much, the house, the housing prices have gone up. But then, as interest rates go up, it forces the, the housing prices down, because the affordability for the individual is less. So.
So these are existing units where the rent is limited by a deed restriction? Because that was the comment.
It is a for-sale home where if-
Right.
If they sell it, they have to-
The amount of equity you can gain is restricted by deed.
If they sell it, they have to sell it at an affordable price. Or if they rent it, they have to rent it at an affordable rental rate.
Gotcha. Caveat emptor.
I think we need to move on, but I think there's kind of general consensus that we're looking for things other than just multifamily housing, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that, um, uh, I, I think homeownership, that whole missing middle type thing, whenever possible, to help people build generational wealth, right? In addition to, I think, some of the things that you agreed are offered with prioritizing Folsom residents, Folsom workers. But thank you very much, Stephanie. Good information. Okay, next item.
That takes you to your consent calendar. And just as a reminder, item six has been pulled off calendar.
Okay.
Can I pull item number four?
Four. We thought maybe somebody was going to pull number eight. Do we need to pull number eight, or no? No? Okay. Okay, then we will entertain a motion.
Wait. I would like to pull number eight, just to get an update on where we are with it.
Okay. We got a heads up about that one. Okay. So we will take, uh, a motion to approve all the items except for, uh, four and eight, understanding that six is no longer on the agenda.
I will move approval of two, three, five, seven, and nine from the consent calendar for approval.
Second. We have a motion and second. Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Raythel?
Yes.
Rorba?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Leary?
Yes.
And DeKino?
Yes.
Okay, item number four is resolution number 11438. This is a resolution adopting an initial, initial study and mitigated NEG deck for the Willow Hill Dam valve replacement project and approval of project. Mr. Yasutaki?
project and approval of project. Mr. Yasutaki.
I just have a quick question on this, and I don't have any issue with the initial study and mitigating negative declaration. My question really is, do we need a fence? And I'm not entirely sure exactly where, not even sure if that's planned out yet, where that fence would go. Just because it is a natural area, it's a nice fishing spot, people run cross-country right there, and so I just don't necessarily love a six-foot chain link fence being put up there. I'm just curious if there's a way to somehow do the project without adding in lockdown infrastructure.
Good evening, Mayor Kino, members of the council, Marcus Yasutaki, Environmental Water Resources Director. We have looked at options that would remove the fence, but we are still recommending an enclosure. One, because it has a stem that protrudes out of the operating valve, so we don't want the potential for somebody to run into that, hit that. But we, but the enclosure in and of itself, we have been able to find something that's about four feet, four feet by four feet, which is smaller than the, the fence enclosed, or the enclosed fence area that was previously considered. We haven't sent the plans out for bid, so it's an easy change that we can make to incorporate this type of enclosure for the purposes of, one, keeping anybody from hitting or running into the stem that's sticking out, but two, to prevent anybody from operating the valve that would let water out of the reservoir itself. So we do have an alternative that we can easily incorporate into the plans so that it is not a six-to-eight-foot chain link fence with privacy slats in there.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Would you like to move the item?
I'll move item number four.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Raythel?
Yes.
Rorba?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Leary?
Yes.
And DeKino?
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay, item number eight, which was also pulled, is resolution number one-one-four-five-two. This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a design and engineering consultant services agreement with REY from grant funds as identified and authorizing a partial notice to proceed and appropriation of funds as also identified.
All right, I'll introduce this real quick. Mayor Kino, members of the council, interim public works director, but soon to pass the torch off to my left here. But, yeah, so first off, I apologize for not having all these details last week when we were discussing the items. So just want you to know that we did have an opportunity to go back, regroup as a team, answer, in my opinion, a lot of the questions that were asked. But Mr. Ryan Neves is going to outline how we can ultimately deliver the full project design along this corridor, but also fully fund certain portions of the project utilizing the grant funds that are available to the city, and then how we are proceeding to meet the deadline requirements of the funding from Caltrans. So I will turn it over to Mr. Neves. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of the City Council, Ryan Neves, Senior Engineer, Public Works Department. Appreciate the opportunity to briefly provide some supplementary information on this agenda item to award the consultant engineering agreement with REY for the Riley Street Safety Improvement Project. Bit of background, the project kind of got kicked off. There, there was a need identified and a pedestrian master plan many years ago. The city contracted to conduct a sidewalk feasibility study in 2020, and following that, we sought grant funding to move forward with the project, submitted numerous grant applications, and conducted public outreach efforts, including active transportation grants, state and regional cycles five and six, and responding to a federal earmark call for projects. And then thankfully, City of Folsom was awarded congressionally-directed spending in the amount of four million dollars from Congressman Bera's office, and we executed a program supplement agreement with Caltrans and accepted the grant funds in November 2023. Then we issued a request for proposals for moving forward with this preliminary design, environmental clearance right-of-way and engineering design in May 2025. We received lots of interest through public purchase, but ultimately only received one proposal from REY engineers. We believe the main reason for that was the extensive work REY's already done on the project corridor. They were the consultant that participated in the feasibility study, participated in grant applications, and passed outreach efforts. And they're a very qualified firm that's done numerous projects in the city, including the Sutter Street, Streetscape project. So we feel very confident with them. There's exhibits that show that were part of the, part of the proposal presented by REY that show the full scope of the project that we do intend to deliver. This, I'll just briefly kind of talk through. There's two, two pieces to it. So this first piece, if we start on the very left, which would be the northern end of the project, there's Sutter Street, and we would tie into existing sidewalks and then construct new sidewalks up Riley Street. There are anticipated retaining walls on both the east and west side of the road in this section. As we continue up to Mormon Street, there are proposed drainage improvements that extend from Mormon Street up to Natoma Street and tie into past projects that the Public Works Department has constructed, the Natoma Street Drainage Project Phase One and Phase Two. So this would be kind of a third piece of that and complete that drainage project. And then continuing to the south, up to Natoma Street, we would again continue sidewalks and pavement improvements, including upgrading the crossings and pedestrian connectivity and for safety purposes adjacent to Sutter Middle School, tying in, again, to existing sidewalk at Bidwell Street and the existing sidewalk in front of the Sutter Middle School on East Bidwell. So that's, again, our ultimate project that we do intend to deliver. However, there are some constraints that we have that lead to the item that we have tonight for consideration. Funding constraints, the, the project that, as presented on the past two slides, has a preliminary construction estimate of eight and a half million dollars. We have identified the grant funding provided by the congressionally-directed spending amount of four million dollars with a local match requirement of just over five hundred thousand. So, and that does include obviously design and potentially right-of-way as well. So there's a, there's a gap there. But additionally, and more critical to our current ask, is our schedule constraints. The construction funds that we, or the grant funds that we received have a construction obligation time requirement of September 30th, 2026. And if we don't receive that construction obligation from FHWA, we will lose the, the grant funding that hasn't been obligated. What construction obligation means is that we have to present environmental clearance, right-of-way certification, and full signed and stamped plans and specifications, a bid package, and they have to review it, approve it, and then authorize the, the funding to be obligated. And in coordination with Caltrans, currently, they're telling local agencies that that process can take two months. So although the date that we need to have the obligation is September 30th, we need to have our complete package submitted really by the end of July 2026. So between that ultimate desired project and our constraints, we've developed the agenda item and, and proposed contract to award to REY. And so what will we get with that, if it's approved tonight? We would get environmental clearance of the entire project limits, as shown on the, on the exhibits. We would get preliminary design of kind of a thirty percent level for the entire project limits, which includes right-of-way determination and potential right-of-way impacts, utility coordination, potential utility conflict relocation impacts, geotechnical drainage investigations, and additional public outreach. At that time, once we have completed our environmental clearance, both SEQA and NEPA, we would then return to city council to present those, the preliminary design, and then construction phasing options that we believe we could deliver within the funding requirement, the grant funds, and that we could deliver and receive our obligation by that September 30th, 2026 date. The agenda item identifies a partial notice to proceed, so that would be to initiate REY with that preliminary project approval environmental document, that initial piece. And then we have identified a preliminary segment one, which is the section most adjacent to Sutter Middle School, down to Natoma Street, as a, as a phase one, that's within the contract that we would award, be, be able to give them a notice to proceed to complete right-of-way and final design. That's our preliminary look at the phase one that we think has the least amount of potential delays associated with right-of-way or utility conflicts. But it's something that as we get through environmental clearance and a little bit more information detail through the preliminary design, we would be able to see if there's other pieces or other segments that make more sense to move forward at this time. And we can also, you know, at that time, discuss options for coordinating with REY on potentially a contract amendment to deliver final design of the entire project outside of the scope of the grant funding, if that was something that we were interested in. But for tonight, based on that information, we're recommending that we, city council adopt resolution one-one-four-five-two to do all of the things on the screen here, execute the agreement with REY for, and issue a partial notice to proceed.
Thank you, Ryan. Any questions?
Many questions. Go back two slides, please, to, to the summary, right there.
Oh, sorry.
Nope, right there. Okay. The, the root of the reason that I wanted to pull this and why I had so many questions when we were reviewing the agenda on Friday is the thirty percent number that's on here. If, in fact, this is an eight and a half million dollar project, right, and we're only getting the design work, professional services to thirty percent design for something approaching seven hundred thousand dollars, not knowing what the balance of the cost will be for design is, makes me uncomfortable. So I would just assume you negotiate a full price with REY, who is absolutely the right choice for working on this project, so that we are going in completely eyes open on what the full design cost will be for the project, and we can evaluate that in comparison to what we think the project budget will be ultimately. Because, you know, seven hundred thousand dollars against eight and a half million is a bargain, right? Three million against eight and a half million is, we're off the rails, right? So knowing what the full, you know, what the full freight will be for getting this project to be shovel-ready, that's what I, that's mostly what I'm interested in. And just as a side thing, I, I personally, I have great affinity for REY engineers. They are absolutely the right ones to do this. I just want to make sure that we have negotiated what our terms will be for the, for the duration, rather than going in with half of the information.
Sure. Great question. And Ryan, can you talk a little bit about that? Because I think we have a full proposal for, for the design for the entire segment. And one of the reasons why they wanted to take this approach is so that we could not get too far down the line, so that, I guess, I think it's fair to say that we have a ceiling.
Phasing the work is fine.
Right.
Not knowing what the full cost will be when we approve this part, and then we'll be committed.
Understood. And I think we can answer that question. So let's start there.
Yes, so the proposal that REY provided did include full final design for the entire project, and their fee was roughly one point one million dollars. So what staff decided to negotiate down, what we thought was complete the environmental clearance and preliminary design for that portion that's being authorized, would be authorized tonight, and it's two hundred and eighty-one thousand of the nearly seven hundred thousand that we would be authorizing. And then we, in discussions with REY, again, knowing our schedule constraints, we preliminarily selected a segment that we felt could maximize the construction funds available, and they could complete final design. So that the delta between the six fifty-nine and this two eighty-one is their fee for final design for what would be that segment one piece. To your point, yes, if we wanted to initiate a, you know, final design for anything outside of what we identified to be that phase one, when we come back, you know, they could.
You answered my question by telling me one point one million dollars.
Okay.
I'm fine with that. I just, I'm going to hold all of you to it.
And I think that's fair. I, I mean, I want to commend staff for kind of the thoughtful approach, because when they saw the one point one, knowing that it's an eight million dollar project, and seeing that we only have four million for construction, how do we get to a point where we can actually build the best segment? And so by, by moving forward only with the thirty percent design, is, you, you're able to find out all the right-of-way constraints, utility constraints, and all the other factors. And then we can say, come back and say, we're going to add to the contract to design the whole thing, or stop at that point and only focus on a segment, so that we can get the best bang for our buck, and basically minimize the cost and, and improve our chance of getting a maximized segment.
Thank you. I'm fully satisfied with that. And Marcus, thank you very much for pinch hitting in the last few weeks. I know I hit you with a bunch of questions on this one.
That is absolutely, absolutely fine. And thank you to Ryan, Ryan Chance, Rebecca, and Brian for all their work as well.
Good work to everybody. Thank you.
Any other questions on this item?
All right, I'll move approval of item number eight.
Second.
Resolution one-one-four-five-two.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Okay, councilmembers Raythel?
Yes.
Rorba?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Leary?
Yes.
And DeKino?
Yes.
Okay, that takes us to our first public hearing, item of the evening. This is item number ten. This will be ordinance number thirteen fifty-four. This is an ordinance approving a development agreement buying between the City of Folsom and Broadstone Crossing Phase Two and Elliott Homes relating to the development known as Broadstone Crossing Phase Two. This will be introduction and first reading of the ordinance.
Let's go on. What do I know? But it's not even coming up.
There it comes.
Oh, why am I not seeing that? Okay. Okay, bear with me here. That's unusual. Okay, now it's showing up. All right. Pardon us for the technical difficulties there. Mayor Kino, members of the, of the council, and Desmond Parrecton, Planning Manager in the Community Development Department. Before you tonight, regarding a development agreement for required improvements associated with the Broadstone Crossing Two, Phase Two project. So that, that project is located at the, at the northeast corner of Iron Point in East Bidwell. It's approximately an eighteen-point-seven acre site. It, it was previously approved by the, the planning commission back in November of twenty twenty-four for a, for three parcels, each with their own office building. The largest office building is the one right here. This is the plan setter, setter, Folsom setter for health. And then there are two additional office buildings here, a three-story one and a two-story one that each are approximately just under fifty thousand square feet. So they approved the parcel map, a plan development permit, design review, and a master sign program for the Sutter facility. And what was noted in the, the analysis was that the, the project, you know, even though it's going to provide significant economic benefit to the city in terms of having Sutter and other potential medical office space, that was going to worsen the, the traffic situation on, on East Bidwell, and particularly the intersection around East Bidwell and an Iron Point, which is already fairly congested. So the city has a policy regarding level of service. That's the time delay at major intersections. And this was significantly worsening that. So while that's not, no longer considered an environmental issue that we look at under, you know, like an EIR, for example, it, it is something that we do need to address to ensure consistency with. ensure consistency with the, the general plan and our, our kind of traffic management goals. So based on the, the transportation impact study that was done, there were a number of improvements that were identified. Of these included signal timing coordination, turn lane extensions, additional turn lanes, lane restriping, and then ultimately the need for a pedestrian bridge across Bidwell because what was happening is when people use, you know, use the pedestrian signal there, it actually throws off the signal timing for the entire intersection, leading to major delays and backups of traffic. This isn't the only project that is, that's contributing to that, and I'll get into that in a little bit, but it was concluded that the, the best way to address this existing issue and, and then the additional projects that would happen was, was to do a pedestrian bridge or over crossing from, from the, near, near the area to the Palladio. So again, these improvements are designed to address the traffic from the project and, and address the level of service challenges at the intersections. So this highlights some of the improvements that we're, we're talking about. So this would be an additional northbound left turn lane on Iron Point, an additional southbound, right turn lane that's southbound from Iron Point to southbound East Bidwell. There are extensions of the left turn pockets here, which the developer will actually be undertaking, and, and then a pedestrian bridge generally in this, in this location. So the, the, the two conditions that were identified and approved by the planning commission was conditions 42, which dealt with the kind of, the intersection and, and access and circulation, and then 43, which dealt with the pedestrian bridge. So Elliott Homes, which was the, is the developer, and, and Price Walker, Vice President of Elliott Homes, is here this evening along with their legal counsel Chad Roberts with Hefner Law. They approached the city indicating that, you know, look, we, we are a developer of, you know, residential and commercial projects. We're not a developer that typically does major roadway improvement projects. And, and they reached out to the city to see if the city would undertake those improvements if they fully funded those. And so we agreed that, because regardless of whether they do it or whether we do it, we have to make sure that they comply with the city's standards when doing that type of, of improvement work. So the city is involved regardless of whether they do it or we do it. So we agreed that, that we would do that, and we've really wrapped up the, the terms of that in this development agreement. So the developer has agreed to pay the full cost of, of those roadway improvements. And then they've agreed, because they're not the only project that is contributing to that, to pay a, their fair share for an amount not to exceed 2.5 million towards the pedestrian bridge. And, and this DA approval is required before the Sutter facility can go, can go vertical. So in terms of the key conditions related to the roadway improvements that I talked about, so there'd be initial deposit of 1.445 million that's due at the building permit for, for Sutter Medical Center. This would get us going on the costs of the design, engineering and environmental clearance. And then after that deposit is drawn down, then there'd be an additional deposit of 2.155 million. That's because the overall project, you know, was preliminary estimated to be about $3.6 million all told. And then to the extent that there's any cost that would be in excess of that, the developer would reimburse the city within 30 days of receipt of, of an invoice from the city. The goal as set forth in the development agreement is to complete these improvements within five years. Because again, it's not just the Sutter facility alone, it's the other, other two additional office buildings, you know, all three of them in total that, that contribute to the challenges here. And then to the extent that other benef, other projects benefit from and actually need these improvements to address their traffic impacts to the area, they, if an environmental document or a, a traffic study demonstrated that, then the city would make its, make efforts to ensure that they paid their fair share towards this. So it's not just Sutter alone or Elliott alone that's, that's shouldering the, the burden of this. With regard to the pedestrian over crossing, there is a separate payment of up to 2.5 million, and this is the, the fair share. To the extent that we don't need all of that, that would be refunded to the developer. In bringing this forward to the, to the planning commission, which we did earlier this month, planning commission unanimously supported this, but their concern was that they wanted to make sure that we got the pedestrian over crossing as shovel ready as, as possible so that it could, we could quickly go after state or federal funding or funding, regional funding from SECOC. So they, they requested, and the developer agreed, that $1 million be provided so that we could get the design and the engineering and the environmental clearance done as quickly as possible. So that $1 million would be done within 30 days of the city issuing a request for proposal to get a, an engineering consultant on board. And then the, the remainder would be due once that, that amount had been drawn down. And again, the, the purpose of this is that they were concerned that, we originally had it so that the money would be collected at certificate of occupancy for the Sutter Medical Center, which is scheduled for mid to late 2027. The concern was if we didn't get the money then, then it was going to be a couple of years before the project would even be shovel ready, and they felt that there was a really, a, a real need for that, that bridge and that over crossing now rather than, than later. So this actually puts us in a very good position to be able to get that work done and then, and then get in a very good position for things like alternative transportation plant, planning grants from SECOC or from the, the state or the feds. So our hope is that rather than getting this done within the 10 years, that we could get this done within half that time or, or less. So that's the, that's the goal. So with that, our recommendation is to conduct a public hearing to consider the request from Elliott Homes to approve this development agreement, and upon conclusion introduce and conduct the first reading of uncotified ordinance 1354, approving the development agreement between the City of Folsom, Broadstone Crossing Phase Two LLC Elliott Homes Incorporated for public improvements for the Broadstone Crossing Phase Two project. So that concludes my presentation. Happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Desmond or the developer? They're both here. Councilmember Leary?
No, I just want to thank you for your work on this. I think we began a discussion about this over crossing years ago when I was on the planning commission. And so I understand it's been very complex. I appreciate all the work that our planning commission chair, Eileen Reynolds, and the audience did on this, and Price Walker.
Yeah, this has been a good...
Along with staff.
Yeah, this has been a good public, private partnership.
It's a very exciting project, and I think it'll do a lot to make that area entirely more livable. Thank you.
Councilmember Rorba, any questions? Any questions over here?
Just one quick one. We're 100% sure that the footings, the land that we're having set aside is big enough for the footings. Just like the development agreement doesn't give us a whole lot of flexibility to extend past that. So I just wanted to say, you know, just want to make sure you guys are 100% sure we have everything we need for those footings on both sides of East Bidwell.
So a, as the DA spells out, I think this is what you're, you're asking. So we, the, the property owner, Elliott Homes, has agreed to donate the land on either side necessary to support the, the footings. Obviously, we'll have to do all the design work to make sure that, that there's sufficient space, but at least on our preliminary analysis, we believe there is.
Okay.
Councilmember Kozlowski, any questions?
If I may clarify real quick. Councilmember Kozlowski, allow me to clarify real quick. I don't think, please correct me if, if I'm wrong, the developer is getting...
Credit toward the 2.5 million.
They're donating to the city.
That, that is correct, yes.
The value of the footings are going to be counted toward the maximum 2.5 mil.
Correct.
Correct. I guess my, my only concern when I read the agreement is, is that you will stay within this envelope, right? Oh, that's there, right? So they've given us a very clear envelope, which is totally fine because if we go outside of our envelope, we're impacting their project. So I'm just looking at you guys saying, yes, we're 100% clear that we need to stay within that envelope and we'll be able to build, you know, whether we have to have switchbacks or whatever to get, get there, you know? I don't know how we get there. I haven't, that's not my, my area of expertise, but that's what I'm really making sure is that we have enough room there.
Yeah, sorry, I misunderstood. Yes, we, we did, we did go over that, and I think we're, you know, both myself and the city engineer are comfortable with, our city engineer slash public works director are, are comfortable with that. I think one of the things that we wanted to avoid is having it too close to, to Iron Point because then the folks from, you know, from Sutter wouldn't be using it. And then, but we also didn't want to get it, you know, to have, have it go too far north to, you know, Broadstone Parkway because again, that defeats the purpose of it. So we believe that that's a reasonable kind of area for the, for it to go and, and at least on our preliminary analysis, it looks like it could fit in there.
Vice Mayor Raythel, if I may chime in for just a second. When we go through the environmental document clearance process, we'll actually identify alternative locations, and that will help us assess what really fits those needs, and the design will conform to the area and spaces that we have.
Okay, but no, because the railroad's right there.
Right.
Too, right? So I'm just, I'm just concerned, right? It's like, when we go down this road and all of a sudden we figure out we need, you know, to encroach more, and our DA does not allow us to do that. So just, you guys are very smart at these things, so I just want to make sure you've, you've looked at and gone, yes, we're, we're fitting within that envelope.
Yeah, and we've looked at a couple of options that actually even help us to kind of clear span the railroad corridor overall and get onto the higher ground on the, on the hillside, and then just basically being construct a, a switchback on the way down to connect to the trail.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Please go back to the diagram of this location that shows the potential location for the bridge over crossing. So I think it's the document, I think it's the page before this one or after.
Oh, the, are you referring...
One of them, one of them showed a potential location.
This is right, it's right, right there.
Okay, so, so conceptually at least, I know it's not settled, but what is the west side of the road, what's the landing spot most likely to be closest to?
The Palladio parking structure.
Okay, that seems really close to the intersection right there. So Palladio parking structure would be further north.
Yeah, I mean, this is an approximation in exhibit...
If we're going from the, the Sutter building, that's the corner, the MOB location of that development, that would indicate to me that you're coming right into, into the parking lot for Whole Foods.
No, so it, it's actually, where the problem is right now is at the Via Felice and Wellspring Drive. So it used to be called Kilrush, it's now Wellspring Drive. That's where the, the problem is. And so the, the, the goal is to capture pedestrian traffic from, not only from the, the Sutter Medical Office Building, but also from Broadstone Villa, also from the, the neighborhoods up over at Cavett. And so to capture all of that pedestrian traffic because as we...
You're talking about the central intersection for Palladio that would, where people are crossing from the east to the west and ending up at the, at the pizza place, at Old Chicago Pizza or Chicago Fire.
Yeah, so...
That's the traffic you're talking about, the existing crosswalk that people are using?
Yeah, it's at Via Felice, yeah, so the...
Via Felice, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Most people don't know the names of the streets.
Okay, so, yeah, that, that's, that's the location, and, and the idea was to put it in a central location that benefited, you know, all the different projects that are affected.
Sure, sure. I was just trying to jive that with what you were talking about.
Yeah, yeah, so I know we've been talking about Sutter, but it's not at this location. It's, it's up, it's actually a little further north.
Further north, okay, gotcha. Thank you. I trust you guys to design this, I just was curious, based on the diagram, it seems misplaced.
Great question. Yeah, we've actually looked at a couple of different locations to land it within that corridor. One actually puts the western footing in the parking lot for like Lazy Dog area. We've looked at, through it, that whole area, trying to maximize where it would have the most benefit in terms of our traffic queuing, and so that would all be looked at as well as part of the environmental process.
Okay, what's the clearance above the tracks need to be?
I don't recall the exact number offhand. I was thinking it was like 20, 25 feet, but I can get you the firm number later.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Do we have any requests to speak?
We have no requests to speak on this item.
Oh, we would like to have Mr. Walker. Come on up.
Madam Mayor and councilmembers, Price Walker with Elliott Homes, just, there's nothing I really need to add. There, there's a lot that has gone into this. Desmond did a great job of explaining it in pretty simple terms, but it's, there's a lot that's taken place. We've had a lot of meetings. I think everyone, everyone in city halls had their hands on this, this DA some point in the last four or five months, including the city manager, who was very instrumental and, and kind of the big, the big point of this really was, we're really good at building things, but we're not really good at shutting down Bidwell and build, building, you know, improvements at eight intersections. And so with that discussion, it was really clear that city would be better at doing that, but of course, they needed it to be funded. So that was really the, the crux of the, of the agreement. The pedestrian crossing is something we've, we've talked about internally at our offices and with others for a long time, and how that, how that exactly gets placed, you know, Councilman Kozlowski's asked some, some hard, good questions, and that, that general area gives us some, some leeway, but really it'll come down to the design, which we're funding it early on to see exactly where it should go, what's best for Palladio, what's best for Sutter Project, and what's best for the, the workings of East Bidwell. There's one design that literally takes it into the, the third story of the, the parking structure because there's a, there's also a elevator right there. So there's some things we're looking at to be creative. City is too, to save some money and, and get it done on time, so, you know...
I think a gondola would be cheaper than this bridge.
A gondola. I'll bring that up tomorrow. Mike wants a gondola, Harry. You know, I just want to really thank everyone who's been involved in this, from Desmond, Rebecca, Sari, everyone worked on it to get tonight, and it's a, it really is a partnership, I think, that, that shows that we can get things done if we all work together. So with that, I hope you would approve it, approve it tonight.
Thank you very much. Any other requests to speak?
No.
Okay, then we're going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to entertain a motion for the introduction and first reading of ordinance number 1354.
So moved.
Second.
Again, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Raythel?
Yes.
Rorba?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Leary?
Yes.
And Aquino?
Yes, thank you for your patience. All right, next item.
Okay, your second public hearing item this evening is ordinance number 1356. This is an ordinance, an ordinance, an uncotified ordinance adopting prima facie speed limits on East Bidwell Street, Westwood Drive, Alder Creek Parkway, Grand Prairie Road and Mangini Parkway. And again, this will be first reading and introduction of the ordinance.
Good evening, Zach.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Happy birthday, Vice Mayor Raythel. Mine is in four hours, so...
Oh, well, let's extend this meeting as long as we can. I wish you a happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Eve.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I'm here tonight to present to you first reading and introduce the prima facie speed limits for some of our newer roads in the Folsom Plan area. As a background, the engineering and traffic surveys are required for us to post enforceable speed limits via radar, radar from our, our police department, which is their preferred method of enforcement. I will provide a brief explanation on the principles behind speed limits so we're all understanding what it takes to devise them and what drivers can expect. So this will ensure consistency, fairness and safety for all motorists. The ordinance before us formally adopts the speed limits on the roadway segments listed in the staff report, and they're all based on the engineering and traffic surveys performed by our consultant, Kim Lee Horn. Uh, so an engineering traffic survey is the basis for, uh, our posted speed limits. They determine what the 85th percentile speed is. Uh, they are also required by the California Vehicle, Vehicle Code to post enforceable speed limit, as I stated before. Uh, they encourage uniform driving behavior, uh, and all these are, are located within the Folsom Plan area. So some of these roadways have been under construction for a while now. Uh, but now that they're newly opened and people are, are driving behaviors, behaviors have been established on these roadways, we've conducted an engineering and traffic survey to establish that 85th percentile speed. Uh, we also take into consideration, uh, traffic factors such as, uh, pedestrian crosswalks or crossing locations, uh, school zones, traffic signals, uh, collision histories, as well as other conditions that are not readily apparent to the motorists, uh, to devise the, the recommended speed limit. Uh, there are regulations governing the speed limit, uh, just before you, I won't list them all, but, uh, it, the basis is in the California Vehicle Code. Uh, it determines how, uh, how the speed limits are established. Uh, we then use the California manual, uh, for uniform traffic control devices to establish our methodology for collecting data. Uh, and finally, it goes before the Folsom City Council for an adoption, uh, into, by an ordinance. Uh, so the recommended speed limits on the roadway segments listed before you, uh, East Bidwell will, uh, continue to be 45 miles an hour. Uh, it's currently posted at 45. Uh, Westwood Drive between Alder Creek Parkway and Mangini Parkway, uh, is not currently posted, but will be recommended at 30 miles an hour. And after this, I'll have a map to show, uh, where these locations are. Uh, Alder Creek Parkway between Westwood Drive and Rustic Ridge Circle, which is near the top of the hill, uh, currently posted at 30 miles an hour, but that, that posting is only in one location. And it's at the top of the hill, traveling westbound, so, uh, a very obscure location. Uh, but we are recommending a posted 35 miles an hour speed limit, which is consistent with the rest of, of Alder Creek Parkway around the loop and to, to Grand Prairie, uh, segment four, Grand Prairie Road, uh, from that Summit Street, uh, to Alder Creek Parkway. Uh, and finally, uh, the two segments of Mangini Parkway, uh, from Savannah to Empire Ranch Road, uh, recommended at 35 miles an hour, as well as the segment from East Bidwell to the west, all the way out to Oak Avenue, uh, that's 35 miles an hour. This is, uh, the map of those segments, uh, color coded for the speed limits that we're recommending. So as you can see, East Bidwell continues, um, at 45 miles an hour. Uh, that's consistent with what's established north of Highway 50. So it continues down to, to White Rock Road there. Uh, Mangini Parkway consistent through the whole entire segment, uh, 35. Um, as I stated before, Alder Creek Parkway between Westwood and Savannah Parkway, uh, a consistent 35 miles an hour. And then finally, Westwood Drive at, at 30 miles an hour. Uh, we've previously completed speed surveys on the other roadways that are not listed in, in tonight's agenda. Uh, so Savannah Parkway has already been completed as well as White Rock Road. So those are already, already been established with a valid radar survey. So staff has reviewed and approved all the engineering and traffic surveys that were brought to us on the following roads, East Bidwell, Westwood, Alder Creek Parkway, Grand Prairie Road and Mangini Parkway. Uh, Traffic Safety Committee reviewed and recommended adoption of these posted speed limits. And staff also recommends that, that the council adopt these engineering and traffic surveys as, uh, as the basis for enforceable posted speed limits. Uh, so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions about the data that we collected or the process itself that we took to establish this. And that's it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Zach on this end?
Nope.
Any questions for Zach on this end?
No, I'll just renew my comments from every other time we've looked at these. It's fascinating how we set speed limits. It's weird and fascinating, so thank you for doing it.
Yeah.
Okay, then I'm going to open the public hearing. Do we have any requests to speak?
We have no request to speak on this item.
Then I'm going to close the public hearing and entertain a motion for the introduction and first reading of ordinance number 1356.
I'll move, uh, to approve ordinance number 1356.
Second.
Perfect. We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Reithel.
Yes.
Rorba.
Yes.
Koszowski.
Yes.
Leary.
Yes.
And Aquino.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Happy birthday tomorrow.
Okay, that closes out public hearings for the evening and takes us to new business. Your first item on your new business this evening will be number 12, appointment of an at-large planning commissioner to serve the remainder of the term expiring in December 2026.
Okay.
Okay, and you just received a request to speak on this item. Do you want to take that first?
Sure, we don't have any presentation or anything like that, right?
Just a brief explanation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, you want to give the explanation first then?
Sure, so a- as you may know, we have a vacancy on our seven-member planning commission. This is one of the at-large seats that became vacant when the, one of the at-large members resigned before their term was expired. So with the item before the council tonight is to make a gap appointment to fill the remainder of that term. So it'll be for about a year and a half.
Okay, uh, just a requirement or reminder that there is, you don't have to get up and speak if you're, uh, putting in an application, but you're welcome to do so if you'd like. And we do have two requests to speak.
Okay, so our first speaker will be Marco Malikatine, who will then be followed by Amanda Ross. He'll have the standard three minutes. So once you start, I'll start your timer.
Good evening.
Good evening, um, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Marco Malikatine, and I am interested in the position here in the planning commission. I'm a longtime resident of this community. I'm proud to live and work in a community that is, uh, considered one of the best places in the country to raise a family. This is no accident. It is because members of the City Council and various boards and commissions all have an extraordinary record of public service that they have applied to this city. I'm also particularly proud of my record of public service as well as civic service. Um, some of you may know, I've served on the planning commission and a redevelopment advisory committee and a number of state boards and commissions as well. I'm also looking forward to applying my professional experience to this post. I am a land use, um, public affairs consultant by background, not limited specifically to that topic. But I have worked on numerous complex land prod, land use projects for housing, commercial, retail, mixed use, even manufactured housing. I even have a client, uh, in the water business, so I'm familiar with water infrastructure as well. And, and in my role as a public affairs, excuse me, public affairs consultant, I'm responsible for working with community stakeholders and the public to educate them on the public before deciding body, its benefits, um, it's, uh, the planning process, uh, the environmental review process, um, potential project impacts and proposed mitigations. So I believe I have a record of community service. I have a professional experience that I can apply to this, uh, job. And, uh, I will tell you this, if selected, I will come to meetings prepared. I will come there with a willingness to listen to differing points of view. And my desire is always to reach consensus to the benefit of our community. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our next speaker will be Amanda Ross. Come on down.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Amanda Ross. Um, I prepared a brief statement I'd like to read to you. Um, I applied for the open planning commission seat. I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for your consideration. I know you have a lot of great qualified candidates, um, that you're considering tonight. And I'm just so pleased to be part of such a civic-minded community. I couldn't believe 23 people applied. That's really exciting. Um, I grew up in neighboring El Dorado Hills and I served as a planning commissioner of El Dorado County for two years. Um, I resigned when my husband and I chose to move to Folsom to raise our family, and I'm so grateful that we did. Um, Folsom is a special city with a community that is invested in its success and cares about its future. I know the planning commission is an important role and I hope to bring my professional expertise, community-oriented perspective and thoughtful judgment to serve my community. Again, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
Okay, you have no other request to speak on this item. Okay, so right now I'm going to be distributing ballots to each of the council members. The ballot that the council members are completing looks largely like what you see projected on the screen here. Um, and while you're completing your ballots, I will just mention that, um, staff really did try to reach the broadest or conduct the broadest possible outreach that we could, so we could reach a diverse pool of applicants. We use the city website, newsletter, social media platforms, old-fashioned telegraph and even our bulletin boards. So we were very happy to get 23 applications and really to ensure that everybody had an opportunity to learn about this, um, opening and apply. Okay. So in no particular order, Councilmember Koszowski votes for Amanda Ross. Councilmember Leary also votes for Amanda Ross. Vice Mayor Reithel votes for Marco Malikatine. Councilmember Rorba votes for Marco Malikatine. And Mayor Aquino votes for Amanda Ross. So on a 3-2, Amanda Ross is appointed. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. As always, uh, we have, uh, far more applicants than we have space available. And so we do greatly appreciate, uh, your interest. Um, keep in mind that appointments, uh, for at-large commissions will come up again, what, December or so, 2026?
In December, this December of this year, you'll have HTC seats available. And then your big recruitment again will be in December of 2026.
Got it, okay. Councilmember Rorba, you want to say something?
I was just going to say that, um, there was a lot of great applicants. Um, I think a hand, more than a handful reached out to, I think, most of us personally. Um, I see at least one in the audience as well, um, one more in the audience as well. Um, so, uh, there was just so many qualified. So I encourage everyone, especially that reached out and really, um, tried to engage with each council member, please apply again. It's only a year and a half. And, um, we love that there are so many people out there that want to serve in the city in, in such a, a, a dynamic way. So thank you to all of the applicants.
If I can add, um, 23 applicants is not a great thing. It's painful to kind of go through that list because I personally know like half a dozen of them and lot, almost everybody's qualified. And the fact that both you, Marco and Amanda showed up tonight, um, put me in a really awkward spot. And I apologize that I can't give it to both of you. Um, I have a stake in both of your success and I really appreciate you applying. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item.
Okay, your next new business item this evening is resolution number 11449. This is a resolution declaring a portion of the APN identified as exempt surplus land and authorizing disposition of said land through a property exchange.
Good evening, Josh.
Good evening, Mayor Aquino, uh, council members. Uh, Josh Kincaid with the Community Development Department. I'll just pull up my PowerPoint presentation here.
Hang on, I'll help you.
Okay.
I'll help you out.
Is it?
Hang on, I'll reset it.
Okay, gotcha.
You got it.
There we go.
There you go.
And need to full screen that. Excellent. All right. So yes, tonight I am bringing in front of you a resolution to declare a portion of a city-owned, uh, um, a portion of city-owned land exempt from the Surplus Land Act and to authorize disposition of that land to a private developer via property exchange. For a little bit of background, the city has owned the parcel shown here in yellow, um, located between Riley Street and Comstock Drive since 1984. The city placed this parcel on a regional housing needs allocation, or arena, uh, in the, uh, housing element of the general plan for up to 17 units, including 16 lower income units. The knife, knife-shaped parcel in red and the parcel to the west of it here at 814 Comstock are owned by a private developer who has an application in for a residential parcel map. Uh, the developer has proposed to exchange an approximately 5,000 square foot portion of the knife-shaped parcel, um, to, uh, to the city for an approximately 3,000 square foot port, portion of our parcel as shown in the exhibit. The developers requested, uh, this exchange to make their parcel rectangular and therefore better suited for development as shown in the resultant parcel exhibit here. The exchange would also have a similar impact on the city's parcel and making it easier to develop. Uh, in reviewing the, uh, excuse me, in receiving the, uh, developable, um, uh, more developable land, excuse me, than what we are giving up, we're also ensuring that, uh, we can retain the units under our arena inventory. And here we see photographs of the land that is proposed for exchange. They are similarly sloped properties with similar development potential that have several trees on them. Um, because the land this city would be taking on has more trees than the land we'd be giving up, we are requiring that the developer pay the, for the difference in tree mitigation as a condition of the exchange. And they were agreeable to that proposal. Uh, this helps ensure that the city would clearly not be taking on, taking a loss through this land exchange. So what we're asking for tonight is for council, council to declare the city, uh, land proposed for exchange as being exempt from the Surplus Land Act. This needs to happen for city property to avoid the lengthy surplus land act process. Uh, we're recommending a waiver of valuation, given the fact that the city would be receiving more square footage than what we would be giving up and receiving funds to make up for the difference in tree mitigation. And finally, we're asking that the council authorize the disposition of the land via the proposed property exchange. Um, if approved tonight, staff will submit the resolution to the California Department of Housing and Community Development, uh, for their final approval. And we'll note that we did submit a draft of the resolution to them earlier to ensure that the proposed actions are exempt from the Surplus Land Act under the code section we identified, and they did confirm that, that we were correct. So with that, I can take any questions.
Any questions over here?
Yeah, I'm a little confused on the diagram. So can we go back to the second slide?
Move this one.
So this one here, this remainder portion that's here. Uh, that, it looks like on this map, that's not part of the land exchange.
It's not, that's correct.
So, but this goes all the way out to the edge of what is the resultant parcel B, right?
Repeat that, please.
This is the edge of the parcel B?
Yes, that, that's the, the city's parcel. That's the edge of the city's parcel.
Okay, so now go to the next slide here.
Sure.
So now, this is the end of parcel B, right?
Uh, correct.
So that's the remainder. So in this diagram, it's cross-hatched. As part of the exchange.
Right.
So in one, it's not part of it, and the other one, it is part of it.
Got it. Yes. Yes, there, there is a house, um, right at the edge of, of that remainder parcel, which is the reason why the city had, um, requested not to take on, um, that, what is shown as the remainder parcel in this exhibit here, um, based on the proximity to that, um, that residence.
But the second, the, just go back here to slide number four for just a second. That is this right here, right?
That's correct.
So that's, this is what we file with the county, right? So this is what we're taking on right here.
Well, this is what's recorded with the county. The other one's what we're going to file with the county, right?
Right, so what we, um, what we would file with the county is the, um, the proposed parcel exchange, I believe?
I'll go ahead and chime in. Yeah, no worries. Great job, Josh.
Thank you.
So, uh, so the remainder portion of the parcel there, as, uh, Councilmember Koszowski correctly pointed out, that's actually somebody's front porch. So we didn't want to take that on as private right-of-way, so we've carved out that piece. Um, there's still a technical review that will occur with these documents before they get recorded and we'll get that cleaned up. But the exhibit that's on the screen right now reflects the exchange of how it will be.
So, a- and I, that sounds good for us not to take it on. The downside is, is this person's, this remainder that we're leaving out here is going to be owned by these folks over here, right?
It will be owned by the applicant, yes. And the, we, rather than being the entity that inserts itself to broker the deal between the two, we've, uh, asked the applicant to reach out to that property owner and, uh, you know, see if there's a dedication or, or, or a sale that goes on. But we're not a party to that, um, that private agreement.
Because it ends up discontinuous, is it going to have to get its own parcel number ultimately and be recorded? Because it ends up discontinuous, is it gonna have to get its own parcel number ultimately and be recorded as an individual?
It can be done a couple of ways. It can be done as a lot merger or a lot line adjustment where you essentially take the lot line out.
What I'm saying, just the exchange that we're making, will it result in that remainder having to become its own
Yes.
distinct piece of property?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, I guess my concern is, is we leave a remainder parcel out there, is this fenced right now?
It is not currently fenced, no.
My concern is, is we leave a remainder parcel out there that's relatively small, that's not owned by anybody who has an interest in it, right?
Correct.
And unfortunately, it borders our parcel. And so then we are left with any maybe nuisance problems or any issues that come up on this parcel.
The nice part away about how this has all come about is that's essentially somebody's, like, driveway and access to their home. So it'd be no different than like your driveway or access off your, off your street, too. So that was kind of the thought behind us further, not wanting to take it. Originally, it was proposed that we would take the whole thing, and then we said, we're not, we don't want to own right-of-way in front of somebody's porch.
So, and has anybody contacted 822? Like, I, I guess I took it from the staff report that that homeowner was not interested in that parcel, but maybe I misunderstood the staff report.
So that parcel was actually originally purchased from that homeowner.
The, the red knife-shaped?
Yeah, the knife-shaped parcel was actually purchased from the applicant, or purchased by the applicant from that property owner with the front porch.
Of course. So that, I guess that didn't answer the question. Is, is this homeowner going to take care of this remainder parcel, or do we expect this parcel to be?
It will either be under the ownership of the applicant, or it will be under the ownership of the adjacent neighbor. It will not be under the ownership of the city.
Can I pose a question? So the owner that's, shows 822, sold the property. Right, so, I mean, I guess, would it be in our best interest for the city to take that?
No, it wouldn't, only because now we would, you know, own right-of-way in that area. That's basically the front face of somebody's home, and it's already being utilized by the private property owner. I mean, in hindsight, being 2020, what would have been ideal is to essentially clean up that knife-piece parcel first prior to the purchase between the two private parties. The city was not a part of that. We were approached with an application to create a more developable parcel and work with the applicant to come up with a solution for that.
I, I can get on board. I don't love it, but I could get on board, so.
It's a, it's a, it's a unusual circumstance.
And it's relatively small. I just, I don't like remainder parcels being left out there. So I'm sure you guys don't either, so I'm preaching to the choir. All good.
Can I just make a suggestion in the future for those of us on this side of the dais who are not engineers and architects looking at these type of plans? For me, it would have been helpful to have a, a slide that shows this aerial view with the red, with the yellow, that shows the after, right, what it will look like. Not, not the official plot map or whatever that's gonna go to the county, but, you know what I mean?
Yes, I believe that's what the, the resultant parcels, outside of the error that's, that's shown in there.
Yeah, 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 but yeah, but I'm saying this with the shapes, but that other format, you know what I mean, Pam?
I, I think that's a fair.
It's almost like when we do a rezoning and we show you the before and after.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Like to see a side-by-side comparable before and after.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, the only error here is the title of this slide. It's not the resultant parcel, it's just the parcels. The other one is the resultant.
I think the intention of it was for it to be the corrected exhibit. But we will work through the technical review process of it, yes.
Okay. So maybe a photo of the house, this porch, and their maintenance of that particular remnant piece would be helpful.
Without terrifying our residents, we're happy to take photos of their houses as appropriate.
I'd like to do drive-bys when I'm, when I'm seeing issues like this come up, just to, to get eyes on.
Yes, ma'am.
On the project, so.
Yeah.
But thanks.
Yeah, of course.
Any requests to speak on this item? Okay, any other questions over here? You'll entertain a motion.
I'll move Resolution, Resolution Number 11449.
Second. We have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Raythel?
Yes.
Rorba? Kozlowski?
Yes.
Leary?
Yes.
And Aquino.
Yes, thank you.
All right, this takes your final discussion item this evening. This is new business item number 14. This is Resolution Number 11427, a resolution approving the Affordable Housing Loan Program Guidelines to establish a clear framework for providing financial assistance to affordable housing projects. And this is funded by the Folsom Housing Fund and Housing Trust Fund.
Hello again, Stephanie.
Do you wanna help me out? It's new business.
You got it.
Thank you. Is it the mouse not working?
Problem is, it's not showing up.
Yeah, I can't adjust that from here, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, what the? Okay, wait, hold on. All right, there we go, all right.
There we go.
Yeah, okay.
Good evening again, Mayor Aquino, Councilmembers. Stephanie Henry with the Community Development Department. For this last item tonight, I'm going to provide an overview of proposed Affordable Housing Loan Guidelines. This presentation outlines the background, the rationale, and key features of the proposed guidelines, and concludes with a request for your approval. Folsom has long recognized the importance of affordable housing. The city funds most of these efforts primarily through INLU fees, which we discussed earlier, and commercial development fees, which can then be used to offer GAAP financing through an affordable housing loan to an affordable housing developer. These loans specifically target low, very low, and extremely low-income households. And in exchange for these long-term, low-cost loans, developers agree to ensure the affordability of these projects for a 55-year term. The city's affordable housing loans are generally aligned with low-income housing tax credit programs, as previously mentioned. And we offer GAAP financing, so the delta between the, the permanent financing and the project cost. Over the years, we've, through these Affordable Housing Loans, we've supported 11 affordable housing projects since 2005. This has resulted in 1,095 units of developed or approved housing and totals over $36 million in funding. Currently, this process of providing affordable housing loans is largely a reactive manner, with developers initiating the request based on their individual project timelines and funding cycles, often driven by tax credit deadlines. The approach has resulted in inconsistent loan terms, which makes compliance monitoring and long-term oversight more complex, as each alone may involve different conditions, repayment structures, and reporting requirements. The lack of consistency hinders staff's ability to effectively track project performance, enforce affordability commitments, and maintain accountability over time. To support sound financial decision-making, the city has relied on expert consultants to evaluate loan proposals and assess underwriting assumptions. While over time, staff has made meaningful progress in standardizing some of these loan terms and strengthening our oversight, the absence of a formal framework has made it difficult to evaluate projects consistently or align with the broader city goals. Additionally, without clear terms established at the outset, developers face challenges in adjusting their financial assumptions later in the process, especially given the complexity, complexity of these affordable housing transactions. All right. So there's basically two goals when we fund these types of projects. First, we want to protect the financial health of our loan portfolio. And secondly, we want to make sure that we, that we safeguard the actual investment in the developed project. To advance these goals, the program, the program intended to create consistent, transparent framework and evaluate funding affordable housing projects. By clearly outlining this expectations upfront, the guidelines will give developers a defined process early on. So some of the key features of these guidelines include clear funding criteria and underwriting standards, defined compliance and monitoring requirements, residual cash flow repayment structure, reserve account requirements, and then the long-term affordability safeguards with city oversight. And the slide also shows a summary of the key loan terms that are included in the Affordable Housing Guidelines. This, this is a strategic shift in the way that we've been moving forward with Affordable Housing Loans, because it puts us kind of in the front seat and allows us the opportunity in the future to have these guidelines in place if we decide to offer like a notice of funding availability or we set our priorities for a specific type of project, such as a senior project, or a special needs project, or a project in the Folsom Plan area. So at this point, that concludes my presentation. And staff is recommending that the City Council adopt Resolution 11427, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Folsom approving the Affordable Housing Loan Program Guidelines.
Any questions for Stephanie?
I have one.
Okay.
I, I apologize, this is kind of remedial. What do you mean by 3% simple interest?
Three.
Sure, I can answer it. Versus compounding, so it'll just be 3% per year instead of 3% added on, and then you take 3% of that new total, and then 3% of that new total, that would be compounding interest. So if you have, you just take 3% on the initial balance, that's set aside as interest. 3% again, set aside as interest. So you're not paying interest on interest on interest, as they're not paying.
So, so 3% on the remaining principal each year?
Correct.
Okay.
But most of the time, the principal is staying the same because they're not making payments.
I got you. Thank you.
Questions?
So I brought it up earlier. Is this the appropriate place to put in where we would like a residency and local worker requirement?
So I did a little bit of research on that, and I think, I think we could add that in. But I think one of our first steps would, we, we would have to adopt an ordinance that spells out our policy.
So should we hold off on adopting these guidelines until we adopt that ordinance, or vice versa? Give me some policy approaches.
My recommendation would be that you adopt these guidelines, and then we come back to you once we complete that research and implement it. There's gonna be plenty of other opportunities where we're bringing housing issues and considerations before you through the, the rest of this calendar year. So there'll be plenty of opportunity for us to come back with that.
So you're talking about a preference for people who would reside in these units? Not necessarily, or, or are you talking about that and also who works on the construction of them?
Not necessarily working on the construction. So way other, some other municipalities do it is, is they say, hey, if you already live in Folsom and you need an affordable housing place, you meet the qualifications for affordable housing, you get one point. If you were.
Prioritizing for purposes of choosing renters.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
Perfect. All right, second question. We're gonna set, you know, typically, these are driven by the developers. The developer comes to us and they've already gotten some sort of state or federal or combination of state and federal funding. So we then kind of fit into their funding portfolio. And we're able to do that to make the project go forward, right? So instead, look at it from another way. Now, we're saying, hey, here's what you have to do, right? Are state and federal programs and guidelines so consistent that we can also be super consistent? Like, what, what I'm worried about is all of a sudden, hey, this is the way this has been done this year. But guess what, we have a new administration, everything changes at the federal level, or everything changes at the state level. I, I'm just kind of curious, are, are we, does that kind of flexibleness and nimbleness to where we're sitting right now? I get that it, it takes more time and it's not ideal because we don't always get the best deal. But does it allow us to kind of actually be the GAAP financer? Or are these kind of state and federal programs, they've been the same for eight years, so it's fine for us to be consistent? Am I making sense? Is that a fair question?
Well, I can say that we've baked in some flexibility in these guidelines, saying that these are guidelines, and at any point, we can decide to adjust them. It's our preference, it's our money.
Got it. I think that, that answers my question. So if the, the game changes at the state level for an affordable housing developer, then they come back and say, hey, this is what changed, and you guys bring it to us, and we say, ignore the guidelines, or change the guidelines to, to match this new funding structure.
Right. And so really, the purpose of these is that after you guys typically approve the, like, the terms of the loan, there's a, there's a bunch of little nuances that go into funding these. And then at the stage where we're getting ready to close the loan and do our housing loan agreement, because we also have a housing loan agreement, we get into some debates with some of the developers on some of the things that we've put in our housing loan agreement, because this way, we have kind of those terms already laid out and say, this is, you know, these are our guidelines. Try to fit these guidelines when you bring your loan forward, and when we sign those, you know, documents to follow.
Thank you. And one more, sorry. When do we think we can come back for a residency, local worker? What are we looking at timeframe-wise?
I would say probably October, November, December. So we have the objective design and development standards that are coming back to you. We have inclusionary housing ordinance coming back to you. So it's just a matter of prioritizing. I don't think the, the timeliness of that will have a negative impact. I think we want to get it done in accordance when we've got these, these books open. We, we also need to spend a little time vetting the issue and making sure we're in compliance before we bring a solution back.
Totally understood. Thank you.
Questions, Councilmember Leary? Yeah, I was just following up on Councilmember Raythel's suggestion about selection of future residents for these. And I, I sort of had the advantage of having the last meeting to do agenda review and heard that suggestion had been made earlier. And I'm a little bit, I guess, confused about whether this belongs in this particular document, you know, kind of dictating to the people that are going to be getting the loans and subsequently managing the applications and selecting residents? Or does that belong in a, in a different document? Because it, it sounds like something that would be difficult to, to prove, you know, somebody's residency or length of residency. There's a lot, a whole lot of details that would go into that resident selection.
Right, so I think we're suggesting we do it separately as an ordinance and not, and not move it into this document.
Yeah, and I think we just need time to figure that out. So it's hard to answer the question this evening. But if in fact, it does make sense for it to be part of the guideline consideration, then we would just bring an amendment back. But we don't, we don't know, we haven't had enough time to, to look into that yet.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear on how, how that was gonna be accomplished. It sounded like it was a suggestion for adding to this document. So, thanks for the clarification. Councilmember Rorba, do you have a question?
No, I just have a comment on this, this other conversation. I mean, as you're researching it, you know, I really would like to know the pros and cons of this. I'm not sure I'm on favor, I'm not against it or for it at the moment. So I think that's part of what you're saying is, we need to vet this out a little bit, so.
Here, here.
Did we seek any feedback from affordable housing developers on these guidelines? Did we seek any feedback from affordable housing developers on these guidelines? Were there anything that they thought was problematic?
We did not. We have, I mean, these guidelines really mostly mimic the, our loan agreements that we've, you know, brokered in the last couple of years, and kind of just more like memorialize them, so we're not having that back and forth. But they did know that they were coming, we've let them know that we were, we thought these were coming about a month ago. So we had let them know that we would be bringing these forward.
Okay. And then, I, I just have a comment, and I don't know if I should have brought this up earlier with the first presentation or now, but, you know, we had this conversation when AKT came to us with their healthy aging idea. You know, we build housing for people of different income levels, people of different ages, with fifty-five-plus communities. What we don't do in this city is have housing for people of different abilities, and I feel very strongly that that's something that we, we need to work on, especially with the high special ed population that Folsom Cordova has. I mean, you know, kids who have autism, let's say, they grow up to be adults with autism, and they want to do all the things that, that, that other adults do, fully-abled adults. And so, Stephanie and I met several months ago now with Alter Regional, which is the local nonprofit who is solely funded by the state to provide services for people with, with different abilities. And their preference is that, and they do provide some gap funding, they have their own access to loans, but their preference is that, for example, in a multifamily complex, that like twenty percent of their, the units would be set aside for their clients, and I would really like to see us embrace something like that. And I think it could even work with kind of the for-sale condominiums or townhomes that we were talking about earlier, because in some instances, you know, maybe their parents want to buy those and pay for them while the parents are alive, knowing that these special needs children are going to outlive them, and they want to make sure that that, that housing is taken care of. So, I don't know if that could be part of a, a call for funding, or whatever, that this is, this is the type of component we're looking for. And I would even think your thing about, that we want to prioritize people who live here or work here, that could be part of the notice of funding, couldn't it?
Yeah, when you offer a notice of funding, you can, there's a whole array of, you know, requirements, and you can score them, you know, senior gets one point, you know. Like I said, you can also do regions, like if we wanted to prioritize our next funding round for a Folsom Plan area project, we could have, have a score higher for that, that area.
Okay, okay. Any other questions or comments for Stephanie? I don't think we have any members of the public wishing to speak.
Nope.
Okay, then we will entertain a motion.
I'll move resolution number one-one-four-two-seven.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Rathal.
Yes.
Rorba.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
And Aquino.
Yes, thank you. That takes us to City Manager Report.
Great, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Just a couple of things to provide information on. First, I want to congratulate Rebecca Neves and her appointment to serve as the new Public Works Director for the City of Folsom. We had a very, very competitive process. We had a, a, a good response to our recruitment, and it, we, we really put all the candidates through a pretty intense interview and selection process. Appreciate, you know, Vice Mayor Rathal and Councilmember Kozlowski for their efforts in that panel. I'm really excited for Rebecca in, for her energy and her leadership and her experience that she'll be able to bring from community development now to public works, so congratulations. Also, the Oak Parkway Trail has officially reopened, following a series of renovations that enhance safety and promote environmental sustainability. Trail users will notice improved surfaces for better traction, new trail markings and erosion control measures. Additional enhancements are planned for next year, including the installation of native landscaping and habitat restoration. The Folsom Parks and Recreation Department is inviting the community to help name Neighborhood Park One, a brand-new park coming to three-two-nine-four Empire Ranch Road in the Folsom Plan area. The chosen names should reflect the spirit of the community, such as Folsom's natural surroundings, wildlife, a rich history and culture. The deadline for submissions is September twelfth. Our, our fire department was busy over the weekend, we had multiple structure fires, we had one that affected a garage. Appreciate the efforts of our, our firefighters, as well as our surrounding agencies for the help in that regard. And then, the following night, there were two homes that were heavily damaged. Yeah, so, units arrived on scene at a large exterior fire that had extended into two adjacent homes, with heavy fire showing from both residential structures, prompting both offensive and defensive operations. Mutual aid was provided by Sacramento Metro Fire, El Dorado Hills Fire, and South Placer Fire Department. We appreciate the drop boundaries and our ability to respond, us going out to help them, and those agencies coming to help us, and I think that's just an exhibit of the success of that response. On Sunday, August twenty-fourth, officers responded to calls for service at the Nike Outlet and Calvin Klein Outlet about a group of four individuals stealing merchandise. Officers recovered over three thousand worth of stolen merchandise from multiple stores within the outlets. All four suspects were booked into Sacramento County Main Jail. Appreciate the diligence of our officers, officers in that regard. Officer Senna, Robertson, Chernovski, and Vale recently received life-saving awards from the Sacramento Police Department. They were recognized for their heroic actions during a twenty-twenty-three medical emergency, where their decisive response helped save a life. The Folsom Police Department is warning residents, especially seniors, about scam calls and texts from criminals posing as companies, agencies, or family members. Tips: Don't share personal info, let unknown calls go to voicemail, never click suspicious links, and check with a trusted person before acting. And then, report fraud to the police department by calling nine-one-six-four-six-one-sixty-four-hundred, and then select option one. And then, this is important to note, there's a DUI checkpoint coming up. Folsom Police will conduct a DUI checkpoint on Thursday, August twenty-eighth, during evening hours at an undisclosed location. Funding is provided by the California Office of Traffic Safety through the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, and so, everyone, you've been warned. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Larry?
Oh, thank you, thanks for all of the updates there. I just wanted to give a shout-out to Jake's Journey Home, who had a fundraiser this past weekend. Jean, who runs this organization, does a tremendous service for our community here, in doing a lot of hands-on outreach in the community to people who are unhoused, and providing a lot of information about how to get help, but actually, taking measures to ensure that people who are willing to get help get into the situations that they need to get into to make their lives more productive. The, the event this past Friday night was packed, and we heard some great stories from people who had received help from her and are experiencing a huge change in their, their lives and ability to enjoy them. One thing I did want to bring up also is, I really appreciate the fact that the fireworks, the additional fireworks event that was proposed for October has been put on hold. I think, I'd like to thank Mayor Aquino for her part in, in having that come to pass. And, something that comes up every Fourth of July, and I heard more of it this year since I've been elected, was getting a lot of letters in the email and comments from people that are concerned about the increased risks of fire with fireworks in our region, and, and people are talking about, you know, the legal ones as well, but particularly about the illegal fireworks that occur, and it isn't just, you know, the fires that are a risk, which I think are huge throughout the year now, not just during fire season. But, you know, we have vets who live in town with PTSD, who are negatively affected by all of the activity, particularly the loud sounds. The animals at the zoo require sedation and monitoring, and a lot of residents are having to take their pets to vets to get prescriptions to keep them calm during the fireworks. So, I'd like to have some future discussion about how we might get a better handle on at least some of these issues. And it's a complicated problem, and I like, I enjoy fireworks myself, but I also am concerned about some of the negative consequences that we're seeing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rorba?
Just a comment about Castle Park Celebration. Last Friday, it was a fantastic turnout, maybe five, six hundred people. And I was just, it went, the entire time, Joanne Broussard did a great job, and so, just everyone that turned out, it was just such a great example of what a community park can be, and why, why we're investing in this park. So, thank you for everyone that came out, and once again, to Joanne for all her work. And Parks and Rec Department, I shouldn't, oh, they're all gone. But thank you for all the work that they've been doing on this whole project, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Kozlowski?
Just two things, congratulations to both of our high school football teams for starting the season off with wins, and the cross-country teams from both schools will be in action here within this week, so lots of sports news coming up soon that way. And I had the random pleasure of going to a fundraiser for Sac State Basketball, which, if you guys have watched the news at all, has hired Mike Bibby as their head coach, which is kind of crazy to think about, and Shaquille O'Neal is their one dollar a year general manager. So he's got the least, he's got the smallest contract you can have, to have a contract, and his son is on the team, so anyway. But in the, the whole reason for me telling you this story is, in the auction of sports memorabilia at this fundraiser was a picture of Jackie Robinson on his first day in the major leagues, which happened to be on April fifteenth, which is my birthday and my dad's birthday, in nineteen, I was not born in nineteen forty-seven, but his first game was in nineteen forty-seven, and oddly enough, it's a picture of four guys on the steps of the Brooklyn Dodger dugout, and the one, Jackie Robinson's on the right in the photo, the guy on the left in the photo was Spider Jorgensen, who is the very first Major League Baseball player to graduate from Folsom High School. So I bought the picture, so I now am the proud owner of that, and made a donation to Sac State Basketball, because, very cool, nice coincidence. That's all, thank you.
Vice Mayor Rathal?
I only had a few minutes to stop by the Castle Park fundraiser, we had very important tickets to see Bad Guys Two at the Palladio that night. Yeah, we'll leave that alone, but it was a great turnout, and I just want to add, if you haven't bought your fence post, or your brick, or your T-shirt, or your artwork, please hop online and do that, and support that park. Did want to give a quick report out on the Sacramento Transportation Authority. I think the, the only topic that had a little bit of discussion at the last meeting was the I Street Bridge Funding Project, Replacement Project, with a, a large price tag between Sacramento and West Sacramento. If you've ever driven across the I Street Bridge, it's, it's an interesting bridge, you're taking your life in your own hands, it's, it's a little dangerous. So it's definitely a needed project, but the STA is looking at being the funder, basically, to help the City of Sacramento complete that project in a more timely fashion, so the, the staff was recommending that it was a very, very low-risk approach for the STA funds in order to basically be the backstop on that, but there's still more discussion to come between those organizations and the municipalities, and we'll see further updates at future meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. As you know, we had the Air District event the other day, we had it out here in the courtyard behind City Hall, which is a great place for an event, but the Air District staff was very, very complimentary of our city staff for all the work that went into that event. So I know communications helped them leading up to the event, Parks and Rec helped them the day of with the setup, but anyway, they were very, very complimentary. So Brian, if you would pass on my thanks to them. Congratulations to Rebecca on her new position, and I also want to thank Marcus. This is the second time Marcus has been our interim Public Works Director, and I think a couple of weeks ago, Brian, when you were on vacation, Marcus was the Environmental Water Resources Director, the interim Public Works Director, and the acting city manager. He couldn't have worn any more hats that day than he did, so anyway. Happy birthday to Justin, and it's eight fifty-four, we are adjourned, thank you.